Being six o'clock, plus a little bit, the time for which this meeting is posted. All those who could, please rise for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. For all.
So our agenda tonight is a discussion of items, the DECA trip, the discussion of schedule, and I guess presentation of permission forms. Next item is donation items, of which two people have provided donations, and we have the donation letters, which we'll deal with later on in the meeting. The next item is budget, and it's the second. It is the public hearing, and the reason why it's here again is that procedurally there were some things that weren't quite right, and so we reposted the meeting. We now have all the details that we didn't have last time, and we'll deal with that officially at 6:30. Whatever we are doing at that point in time, we'll have to stop and call the meeting, public hearing by roll call vote, and then open the public hearing. After that is the superintendent's update, which specifically deals with DESI's guidance, and I believe it's a result of the vote of the Commonwealth relative to MCAS. The next item at seven is the citizens' requests, school committee reports at 7:15. Action items would be the discussion of what our action would be on the trip that we're discussing earlier, the acceptance of the donations, and a vote on the superintendent's recommended budget. After that, approvable minutes of 12:424, and adjournment therein. So with that, why don't we begin with a discussion of the DECA trip?
Great.
Please come up.
You may have met her before, Amanda Ugonow, a high school counseling staff, is here to tell you a little bit about it.
Hi, everybody. I've been here before, so it's nice to see you all again, and also nice to meet Allison again, a couple times. But my name is Amanda Ugonow. I'm a school counselor at Westboro High School, and I am also the DECA advisor. We have two overnight field trips coming up this year that I need to get approval from you all if we could participate in them. DECA, as a reminder, is a business decathlon club where students compete amongst students from around the globe in business acumen. A lot of students will prepare by either doing a role play or what we call a written event. We actually have our first level of competition, which is our district competition, on the eighth of January. And after that, if a student is in the top four of their category, they will move on to the state level of competition, which is an overnight trip. And then if they move on from that, they will go to the international level of competition, which is also an overnight trip. Right now, we have 88 students enrolled in the club, who are all competing in about 24 different categories. We're actually after school today, practicing our handshakes. So the first trip I'm looking to get approved is our state level of competition. That is February 27th through March 1st. They will be, it will be a full day out of school, so it is two days that they are missing. And then we will return on a Saturday, and that competition is at the Seaport Convention Center in Boston, and they will stay overnight. And if they were to move on, then the next trip we would be looking forward to get approved is in April, in Florida this year. Last year was in California, this year it is in Florida. It starts during April break, so it would be April 25th, and it goes through the 30th of April. So those are the two kinds of trips that I'm looking to get approved. The schedule will be very much, if not similar, to what you have there. I don't have exact numbers yet, because we have not had our first competition yet. Last year, we had 91 students at districts, and then we had 37 at states, and we had nine at our international level of competition. So I'm assuming that we're going to be probably around those numbers. So hopefully, these get approved, and these kids can keep moving forward. But does anyone have any questions for me?
I don't have any questions. Just wanted to say thank you for putting this together. I think you and I have been in touch. My daughter's going to be on the trip, I believe, so I got to tell you, I love your glasses.
Thank you so much.
I can't get beyond that first. So yeah, I think it's a great opportunity for the kids. I know that they went last year as well. The Boston trip was really, the kids really enjoyed it, from what I heard, and it's a wonderful learning experience. I'm so excited to see that Westboro has grown its DECA program so much. It's, you know, it's a really big program around the entire country that kids are participating in. It really gives them the opportunity, and shows them not only leadership skills, but speaking, public speaking, debating, in, you know, some ways. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Well, since we're way early for our budget meeting, why don't we take up the votes relative to the request at this point, if you all agree? Hey, is there a motion? Sure there is. Come on.
I'm just making sure that I know what I'm moving to do. Vote, I move to approve the DECA trip. Is that what we're doing? Yes, right?
Yep.
Yes, the DECA trip to the Boston portion, or are we doing the whole thing?
That's the leaving on February 27, '25.
Yes.
The other one is in April, so.
Are we voting on both?
We will.
Okay. So we are, I move to approve both trips for April and February for DECA.
That's good. That's sufficient, and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we won't hold you up. All those in favor? Aye. 500. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'm sure all of my 88 students very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
I think we're getting all signed off officially here. It's all done.
Okay, so the next item in that category is a discussion of donations. Why don't we start with that, Allison?
So two kind of wonderful gifts to the school community, and the documents are attached. The first is a monetary donation to the failed school, and the principal has proposed putting that donation to use to purchase leveled text, which are basically texts that are really designed to help support kids' reading development and skill development as readers, and to promote their enjoyment of reading as a thing one does in life, too. So wonderful gift and a wonderful use for it, from Ms. De Silva. The second gift here is a furniture donation.
Okay.
Do you want to take them one at a time?
Yeah. Did you mention the dollar amount?
Oh, the dollar amount is $2,000 for the cash donation. Thank you.
So is there a motion to accept the gift from Mrs. De Silva in regards to the failed elementary school?
I'll move to accept the gift of $2,000 made from Mary Ann De Silva to be used for the failed elementary school.
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion? We're very thankful for this gift and others that we also receive, and wish that, in fact, it's a nice gift to the school at Christmas time. So with that, if there's no other discussion, all those in favor? Aye. 500. Thank you.
Wonderful.
The next one is, go ahead, Allison.
Yes, the next one is from Fairway, and this is a donation of chairs, so it's actual furniture, to the public schools. These were kind of, I believe, office-style chairs, sort of good workstation chairs. And these, this is wonderful for us, because often we go through these at the building level for teachers and other people, office staff. And so it's a great way for us to refresh some of the furniture in our buildings with no cost to the community. So it's a fantastic thing for us to have that donation in kind. It's $500 worth of furniture.
Any discussion? Is there a motion?
I move to accept the donation from Fairway Mortgage for 25 chairs valued at $500.
I second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Again, we're very thankful for donations to the school, particularly things that are quite useful, including 25 chairs. So thank you very much. It's a nice effort at Christmas time for the benefit of the schools. Thank you. Okay. Not 6:30 yet, and that is the protocol. We have to wait for that time.
If you'd like, I can move the superintendent's update, which is relatively brief.
Yep.
Okay, let's do that. I have a few things to report, including the linked information there about the updated guidance from DESI around competency determination. We received not only this written guidance, but also some advice from the attorney for the Massachusetts Superintendent's Association. And Daniel just today attended a webinar that DESI put on just around competency determination. And we have just a few important bits of information to share. Most importantly, just to clarify that competency determination is not the same as a graduation requirement. It's sort of a subset. So graduation requirement is here. Competency determination is something that must be met in order to be eligible to graduate. And with the departure of MCAS as competency determination, the department is looking for schools to designate some other set of criteria that is kind of on par with MCAS in some way, shape, or form. So, you know, MCAS was designed to measure whether students had basic skills around, or mastery skills around some mathematics, science, and English at the 10th grade level. And so now it falls to us to make some decisions about particular courses or coursework that would meet that requirement, which then would make students eligible for graduation, although they would also have to meet further graduation requirements determined by the district, which we have already kind of had in place for any number of years. So kind of procedurally, that's a little wrinkle, but we wanted to make that clear. How did I do? Daniel, you heard this firsthand today, so I want to make sure I got it.
Yeah, you did. And if you're interested in looking at the specifics, the item number one in the Q and A, the third paragraph makes clear the guidance that they're giving us so far about what competency determination much must demonstrate. So, and so they are sort of doing this a little bit, you know, on the fly. They keep on updating their FAQs. This is the second iteration, and they said today that there probably will be more coming soon. But they do advise us to act rapidly, because the new law goes into effect in January. And so we need to pay particular attention to anybody, especially in our graduating class of 2025, who may not have yet passed the MCAS.
Yeah, so specifically, my question was around that. I know there's some guidance there, but they also have sort of kicked it back to you guys to figure out how to handle those students who are graduating, who haven't yet either passed, or I don't know if it's not taken, but maybe not passed, the MCAS, and what the, but after January, they're not, were not able to use that irrespective. So even for the class of 2025, it would not be applicable. I mean, it would not, we could not use that as a determining factor.
We can't use the MCAS, no.
Right.
If they haven't passed it. If they have, then you can.
So, and I know we've also talked about this before, that we, as a district, thankfully have a pretty, we already have solid competency requirements, you know, not maybe in, exactly in that form, is, you know, the terminology may be different, but we do have certain standards that we have to have each student have met in order to graduate. That's correct, right?
Correct, yeah.
So are we anticipating any issues in our district with this, or not so much?
No, I don't think it's going to be particularly difficult. But we do have to be very clear about the distinction between graduation requirements that are sort of distribution requirements in terms of the number and type of courses students take broadly versus the subset of ones that meet the competency determination criteria. So we'll make it clear to you. We'll bring you an update, I think, in, early in January.
Right.
So we're planning to.
We're going to move quickly on this. I think Daniel's working with the team at the high school, and, you know, because it involves handbook language, I assume this site council will weigh in there as well. So it'll kind of work through there and land with you all for consideration early next year.
I have a question, too. Do you know, on the top of your head, how many students are in that category that did not pass the MCAS in 10th grade or are seniors?
Less than five.
Very few.
Less than five?
Yes.
Okay. That's good.
Yes. It is good.
Any other points or discussion?
So then, just to throw, I mean, out of curiosity, since he asked that question, since we have five or so are under that number, you said, that may not have passed, would that also then probably, I mean, I'm not familiar with the level of rigor that the MCAS actually has. I would think it has a base, you know, it's sort of base knowledge for mathematics and sciences and things, I imagine. But I would imagine, then, that those children are probably having, are they also then struggling with the quote-unquote competency requirements that you have set in schools?
I don't know that for a fact. I mean, some students just don't test well, so I really don't know the profile of them and, you know, but I anticipate they, we'll get them to be able to pass the competency determination. That's our hope.
And I think, you know, this district, like many others, works really hard, even prior to this, really, to put things in place that are going to help students meet the competency determination. And before, in addition to MCAS, there was a secondary pathway that kids could use to demonstrate proficiency, and it did also have to do with completing coursework. So there's some familiarity we have with navigating that whole thing, so, and we'll draw on that.
I would assume we did very well prior to 1993 in terms of who graduated and who didn't, and I'm sure that.
Yes.
Whatever that system was can be resurrected and modified to fit whatever the current need is. It really shouldn't be a problem.
I don't think so.
Agreed.
I think it is interesting, though, how this MCAS tool has now been taken away from DESI, and I guess, given the obvious, that it has been put back into the hands of the school districts themselves, which I guess, if you want to summarize what the vote of the Commonwealth was, I'm sure that's exactly what they meant, so. Yep, pretty well. Any other comments before we move on?
I do have a couple other things I can let you know about, just since we have a little time.
Yep.
Great. So first of all, I wanted to let you know today, onsite, and tomorrow, representatives from the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, are here conducting building assessments. And this is a process that the MSBA goes through on a regular basis throughout the state, and what they're really looking at isn't anything that has to do with us, per se. It's more gathering data in order to design programs that will be in the benefit, be for the benefit of public school systems. So for example, they currently have a rapid repair program that came out of some assessment data that they pulled together. The program that they just released, which has to do with heat pump replacement, again, came out of some assessment and information they gathered by traveling around the Commonwealth, looking at buildings, and doing some boots-on-the-ground assessment. So just to let you know what that looks like, Kelly Jacopello and Tony Lemay are the true heroes of the week, because they are walking around three different sites with the representative from MSBA. The sites that they chose, and we don't get to pick, this is them choosing, for whatever reason they decide, are at Gibbons', Mill Pond', and at Hastings'. So our principals in those three buildings are also pretty involved in answering questions, detailed questionnaire questions. John Green, on the technology front, also was involved in giving some information about our kind of technology infrastructure and readiness, and our custodians, boots on the ground in all the buildings, are sort of involved. So, you know, the timing for us is, I would say, you know, it is what it is. The folks chose these two days right before, right before the holiday break. And I just want to really thank the principals, Peter and Jack and Julia, as well as our facility staff, for pitching in to make that visit work and provide good data to this organization, which hopefully will come to benefit the district in some way, shape, or form over the next few years. If you have any questions about that, I can attempt to answer them. We'll have a little more detail about it after the site visits are complete.
So was it our side that chose to go visit Hastings?
No, this is, none of this is anything that we control. It's really, they go out and visit everywhere.
I only raise it because the issue of, quote, "heat pumps" relative to what's installed at Hastings is a ridiculous visit.
Yes.
Since, in fact, what we have there is much better than a heat pump.
Yes.
I guess it's a ground source, heat pump, versus an air heat pump.
Yeah.
However, I guess to the extent that they might learn something, it's probably a pretty good thing. Luckily, that system has been overhauled in the last few years, and good to go for, we hope, another 20 or so at Hastings.
Yeah.
The other, I guess, concern I would have, until they flesh out their program, MSBA doesn't give you anything for nothing.
No.
You know?
No.
The percentage share between the town and MSBA, as we know, relative to the other jobs that we've done here.
Right.
And my philosophy has always been, until the equipment we have fails and needs to be replaced, that you have to look at the cost of, quote, "the freebie" versus the cost of what you have. There have been many people out there trying to suggest that we take something that otherwise is operable, it may last for another 10 years, and in effect, throw it away, and replace it with something that costs a lot of money. And so I'm never in favor of that unless we do a cost-benefit analysis, including, quote, "the freebie" you might get from MSBA.
Indeed.
Certainly, this school district has had plenty of experience with MSBA on the good side and the bad side. Allison brought up some time ago, in private discussions, the issue of roofs and this repair program, which we did sign up for. However, at the time that we signed up for it, we had our own estimates of what it would cost. And by the time the MSBA got done with it, it cost twice as much then. So it isn't necessarily the best thing in the West until you do the analysis to figure out how we benefit from the state's largesse, which isn't always so large. Anyway, so I'm, I guess, optimistic, but not necessarily enamored with the process, which is, when they decide they're going to give you something, it comes with all kinds of bells and whistles and caveats.
Well, so if you go with MSBA, are you limited to the contractors, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, basically, MSBA is, you got to do it according to state bid laws. But how you do that is, is reviewed by MSBA, as well as, depending on project size, you have to go out for a project manager, an owner's project manager, you ask, you also have to go out and hire, under certain criteria, the engineers that are necessary. And of course, that adds a lot of cost to some things that are, you know, let's call it off the shelf. HVAC, HVAC heat pumps are pretty much off the shelf, but if the dollar amount is too much, or over, I guess it's 50 grand, then you're going to have to hire the, the others, which, as we already know, are not inexpensive. So, like I said, you have to use a lot of logic to this, to what you, quote, "get for nothing," because. Very smart guy between Daniel that said you don't get anything for nothing.
That is true.
Might be an old Polish proverb, too, right? So, let's see where we are.
I don't believe in free things.
I think, I think we have a couple, couple minutes. I have two, like, nice news updates. I can share those with you. One relates to a, a teacher achievement. One of our newly hired teachers, actually, Jesse Catigan, at the middle school, earned the American Meteorological Society's Certified AMS Teacher Designation, which is this professional recognition for completing coursework and raising earth science literacy. It does not mean that I will be deferring to Jesse for snow day calls, although I kind of wish it did mean that. But it's a wonderful thing to have a teacher that we just brought into the district bring this kind of knowledge and expertise with her, and so I wanted to kind of take a moment to acknowledge that. And then just a quick acknowledgement, and many of you may have seen this as well. I'd had the chance to attend a number of holiday concerts and our, I, I can't tell you how impressed I've been with our fine arts department and the young musicians that they work with. I saw two concerts at Gibbons last week, a concert at the high school last night, and I think, you know, for me personally, as somebody who grew up doing music, my grandfather was a music teacher, I studied music throughout my childhood and continued it on into college. And so it's just sort of heartwarming, but above and beyond that, I think there's actual sort of research and, and data on the correlation between music study and academic outcomes. And so when we have a district where so many kids are involved in music and in the fine arts, it really does, I think, have implications for their future achievement as well, at least, we hope, you know. And correlation and causation are different, but still, I think it's a nice number to, to be aware of. So really, you know, kudos to the Fine Arts Department and its director for all the hard work. And just an acknowledgement, too, that this district has an extraordinary program that I think is enviable for a lot of places. And also a nice thing to do, you know, this time of year, to get out and see some music, so.
And I think all of us here on this side of the table would agree with everything you said, which is truly the reason many of us sit here to do this stuff, because of the opportunities for our children in the school system and how well they do. So I think everything you said is certainly perfect, and we're glad that you found that, and so. We're almost there. Two more minutes.
I can give you Reagan's update, because she is notably at a track meet. So why don't I do that? I'll rattle off some of the updates from our student rep, and that'll save us a little time later as well. She left this very kind report for me and said, and she did try to see if she could come back early, and was told that that wasn't how it was going to work. So I appreciate her making the attempt and also taking the time to send a comprehensive update my way. She reports that at Fail's this week, Character Lessons Focused on Acting with Kindness, where students decorated snowballs. These individual snowballs will be used to make a larger display, showing how kindness can snowball and positively impact many. And then this Friday, there'll be an all-school meeting where they'll show off the snowball display, enjoy a fun sing-along, and a performance of Chicken Little by a few students. At Armstrong, the report is that Family Music Night was a big hit, and a special shout-out to the Armstrong Parent Group for all the successful events that they've put on during the past few weeks. At Hastings, they had a School Spirit Day today, and students wore purple or Hastings clothing to school, so I imagine there were hedgehogs all over the place. There was also a school meeting and a sing-along that went very well. Book Fair was a success, both in person and online. At Mill Pond, the sixth graders had the perennial math contest, and the fifth graders will have it today, and fourth graders have it tomorrow. So they're, they are not coasting into the holidays, but like, keeping full on and doing some math right up until the 11th hour. At Gibbons, they wanted to ask, be sure to order your yearbook. The Gibbons Community Service Club is having a fundraiser this week during lunch to raise money for local animal shelters. There is a new Girl Talk Peer Mentoring Club that's available, where some high school students are speaking with middle school students about ways they can build confidence and develop leadership skills. And at the high school, this Friday, our orchestra and chorus ensembles are playing a concert during the school day for students and staff to enjoy. Winter sports are up and running, and all of our schools will enjoy an early release this Friday, the 20th, and our winter break begins at the end of this week, and everyone returns on January 2nd. So that's it from, from Reagan.
Pretty good, and thank you.
I think that got us to 6:30, so.
So it did. So it being 6:30, the time for which a public hearing has been posted, and because it's a public hearing, we need to have a recordable vote by the school committee to go into the public hearing. So I move that, that we vote to move into a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Roll call, please.
I think it's a roll call. Shemsuren, yes.
Moskai, yes.
Bachelor, yes.
The Red, yes.
Ask you, yes.
Very good, thank you all. We are now in the public hearing for our budget this year, fiscal '26. Allison, if you'd like to, obviously, the public may have seen everything we did last week, and I think we can parlay some of that information, as well as discussing the specific detail that we now have available to us, which we didn't have last week, or last meeting.
Yeah, I was not planning to redo the presentation. Instead, I just have a few quick overview points I wanted to make in response to things that folks have reached out about. Do want to acknowledge, I appreciate the second shot at it, the sort of procedural mishap last week, and, you know, both Lynn and I are learning our way through it, so thank you for your patience on that front. I do want to acknowledge once again that this budget is developed as a level services budget. We've kept our supply-side requests very low, and we've put forward a modest number of staffing reductions, just those that we believe we can absorb, and, and keep class sizes within guidelines, and keep our kind of programming intact with the same level of kind of service provision to our students. Finally, I want to point out a couple of items that we will need to revise from this budget packet that we sent to you. This is a draft, obviously. We will go to print after we make some small revisions and after I hear from you this evening and from the public this evening. First of all, if you scroll to page 16, Daniel, there is a statement kind of toward the end of the executive summary portion, kind of about process going forward, and I think the way it's written is, is both incomplete and misleading. So if you scroll up just a little bit to the top of the page, so the, the statement is really about kind of, kind of who is left to weigh in in the process, and it sounds like both, it's phrased in, in a way that sounds like both the capital planning committee and the advisory finance committee are going to be talking about both the operating budget and the capital budget, and that is neither precise nor helpful. So we'll go back in and revise and sort of make that process information a little bit clearer. So that's one note I wanted to make. And then if we go all the way down to the end of the budget book proper, where it talks about the, let me find the page number here, it talks about revolve, revolving accounts, we're going to go to the music account, and I think it was Steve who reached out to point out to me, there seems to be a negative balance, which is not, I can, not an expected thing. So I want to offer a bit of explanation for that.
Do you know what page this is on?
One more page, sorry.
Here?
Two more, one more's. There we go. This is, right there.
There we go, yep.
What page number is that?
It's 42.
42, thank you. Okay. The, the correct balance is right around $8,000, and I want to say that negative balance is the result of essentially a transfer that was requested and hit the wrong account line, so we're in the process of hunting down where the transfer landed and getting it into the right place. The music revolver involves pulling in money from ticket sales and expending money on the, the sort of supplies related to run events in music, so there is a lot of in-and-out in, in one of these cases, something just hit the wrong line, so we're chasing it down. But Anita called over on that one and got it sorted out. So those were just my two quick notes of things. And just to say, we're holding off printing the hard copy till we really kind of make sure, anything else like that that comes forward that needs to be addressed, we want to do that so that there's no confusion. And I will leave it to you all to ask questions if you have them.
You've sort of taken care of my questions. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Could you speak a little bit to the school lunch, the revolving account? That's on the page 40.
Sure, let me pull that one.
Page 40.
Yes. The top of page 40. Yeah, right there. That, that balance keeps growing. I'm just wondering, you know, there is a narrative before that page that says that this fund is not general fund. What, so what, what can this money be used for and, you know, can it grow indefinitely?
So the funds can, okay, sorry. So the funds are very much only for lunch-type expenditures. If we want to do a renovation in the kitchen and the cafe, if any of the appliances need to be replaced, we could replace those. So we can't use it for any general fund expenditures. It's only for the school lunch account only.
You know, the reason behind the kind of ever-increasing amount has to do with actually the sort of free lunch programming, ironically. Because that's a federally funded program, we are taking in funds for the program and don't have as much to spend them on right now. So it's, it's a strange situation to be in. I mean, we are actively looking at places where cafeteria tables need to be replaced, where there are upgrades we can make to kind of the kitchen and servery areas, where there's anything we can do to make sure that those funds are appropriately used to support our students and support the lunch program, but.
My memory serves, we also have to preorder food towards the end of the year and the beginning of the, the next school year, and there's a fair amount of, of quantity of food that has to be ordered and, and put into the freezers. And so that's one reason why the amount of money is fairly large. That's my memory of it, that, that we have to front that with, with cash upfront and buy the stuff to get it into the freezers before school starts. But I'm sure we'll be able to figure out what to do with it. As I recall, three or four years ago, we bought a lot of tables for the high school because they were basically unsafe, and, and so we began replacing cafeteria furniture as a result of that.
I mean, I do think at some point, if the free lunch programming comes to an end, this will draw down more rapidly, so this is, part of this is just a sort of strange, you know, and unexpected side product of a federal program.
Do we have any indication from the state whether that program will, will, will end anytime soon?
I've not heard anything.
I mean, it was pledged to continue this, over the summer, this past summer, so for this school year at least, I don't know, we may have inside intel if it comes our way, but this is, you know, it's, it's a strange situation, but, you know, we'll, we'll use it responsibly and accordingly to the, the parameters, but, you know, I don't want anyone to look at that and get big ideas of other, other uses, as much as it might be tempting to do so. It's just, we've got to keep it within legal parameters, so.
Thank you.
I guess one of the other things I would, I would suggest, that we not put capital requests in our budget, beginning on page 49 of, of this. Reason being is that these are ideas, if you will, certainly it's information to the town at this time, but our operating budget has nothing to do with capital requests, because although capital requests are, relative to the school department, are important, there's a whole different procedure by which it gets approved, specifically, as we all know, through the Capital Expenditures Committee's recommendations. There are rationale behind the Capital Expenditures Committee review and commitment of money, and it is also associated with, let's say, the target numbers as given to Capital Expenditures Committee by the town manager. So other than this being a wish list, which in my own mind is a separate animal, really shouldn't be in here, part because it could bias what people want to do relative to the school budget. You know, whether we, we get any of the requests at town meeting for capital improvements is, is, I guess, subject to the general feeling at the town meeting. We really do want our budget voted, you know, as is or with rational changes to it. So, you know, it's a different process, and I, I think it's probably not, it could be a separate document, that could be offered at the same time for information, but we don't get to deal with the capital request until March town meeting. So anyway, those are my thoughts on the book. Also, I, I do like the way it's been put together for a presentation, and, you know, the details of the various tables that go with it are, are very interesting, and it is quite transparent, I think, at this point. Anybody else with comments on the budget?
I would just like to second that. I, I love the details, you know, by the cost center. I think this is very informative, very transparent. I think, I hope it will be appreciated by the, by the, by the residents, because there was, you know, I always hear comments that the budget is not as transparent as, as, as they wish, and I think this, this really answers all those questions.
Thank you. I mean, I, I think this is an iterative process, and so this, this version that you're seeing, I think, is a baseline from which we'll kind of continue in that direction. I know Anita will be working with our kind of partners on the town side and the whole business office to make a transition into the DESI-approved account system, and so this gets us a little bit closer to that. And I think at that point, we'll have better year-over-year data, so you can really see and track, and as can everybody else, see and track changes year-to-year in different parts of the budget. And, and, you know, along with that, I think our hope is to, to sort of try and put things where we think we're going to spend them as best we can, knowing that sometimes something happens. I mean, one of the, the glories of a school budget is, it is voted as a bottom-line number that we want to retain and use when appropriate, the ability to kind of move our money and solve a problem if, if it needs to be solved. But by the same token, we want to be really upfront about what we're hoping for and what we're planning to do, so.
I do just have one quick question. I just want to follow up on a question I had asked at the last meeting. I'm looking at page 47 here, where it breaks out the BURROW program, and apologies if I did miss this somewhere else in the packet, but I was just wondering, were we able to get any kind of estimate relating to how much savings we were able to attain through the BURROW program? And is that information here, and I'm just misinterpreting it?
I don't have anything for you yet, Tim, and I'm sorry about that. I think it's, it's a, I guess the question is, it's a little hard to assess, because baked into your question is an assumption that if we didn't have this program, kids might go out of district, but we don't know that for sure, because there are many districts that provide in district. in-district programming that's, you know, it's adequate and just, it's not as innovative, really, when it comes down to it, and certainly isn't revenue generating. So I think that that's how I would characterize the program. And interestingly, it has spawned sort of similar programs in some nearby districts. And so I think people are noticing it and seeing it as a really positive thing. I could ask the question of, is there, you know, any sense that we avoided any major changes in tuition as a result of this? I don't know if we'll be able to answer it with a ton of accuracy, though. So I just want to put that upfront.
Sure, and I appreciate the response. Thank you.
Sarah?
Nothing right now.
Steve?
No, nothing.
Okay, I guess I would summarize my own comments, which is, it's, I guess, a concern for all of us that in fact, we're looking at increases at the level that we are.
Yes.
But I think, looking back over the last three years in terms of impact of COVID, the way budgets were handled, particularly as a result of some federal funds and other things. And also, if you will, the impact of all of that had on union settlements, not only in our case, but in other school districts. Things didn't work out quite as well as they did here. Also, the knowledge that the inflationary spiral hit many other pieces within our budget, including the bus contract. And so almost to offer to the town a budget that we hope will continue to deliver the quality of education that we have in Westboro, these are the numbers that we believe are necessary to do that. And so with that, it being a public hearing, and a couple of people are here to talk about it, I'm sure. So come on up, Mr. Savoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Wilford, 41 Chestnut Street. Again, as I did at your last meeting, I want to urge you to consider the financial condition that many of the Westboro taxpayers are under right now with increased property taxes and inflationary rate reaching 20%. As you make your deliberations on the budget, would ask that you keep this under consideration. Second point is that I provided you with three charts. One, first chart indicates the functions, expenditure functions of the school department and the relationship between the 14 comparative communities. Two functions stand out as far as high expenditures compared to the other communities. One is professional development, and the other is operations and maintenance. We rank fourth out of the 15 towns in professional development. Now, this is expenditures per student in FY23. And operations and maintenance, we rank third out of the 15 communities. The second graph breaks those functions down into line items to look at where the expenditures that we made in our school department that were, that made them significantly higher than our comparative communities. I would point out two line items. About a third of the way down, it's line item 2356, costs for instructional staff to attend professional development. It was $764,000 spent on that line item in FY23, which is about $300,000 more than the closest community. And it ranks 11th in the state. So that would be something that I think the committee should look at in terms of their expenditures. The second line item I would point out is about three-quarters of the way down, line item 4210, maintenance of grounds, $1.3 million. And that ranks first, the highest, out of all 14 comparative communities. So those are two line items that I would urge the committee to look at and the administration to look at in terms of costs. My final graph shows a five-year history of expenditures. And the second, the second area, which is the 2356, costs for instructional staff to attend professional development. You can see that there's a dramatic increase in that. Now, that usually could be because of excess in some accounts and transfers into that account. I don't know that. But it does show a dramatic increase in that particular expenditure category. And also, second from the bottom, technology, infrastructure, maintenance support is another area where there's a dramatic increase over the four-year period, five-year period that shows a dramatic increase in the expenditures by the school district. So I point these out simply to bring it to your attention, to take a look at them, to see why there's very high expenditure compared to our comparative communities. And I would also say that we are in a, as the superintendent has explained, level services budget, which simply implies that we're funding at a level needed to maintain the current services. But in financially difficult times, you need to look at beyond that or underneath that. What are the expenditures? And that's what I'm hoping to provide you with this. And finally, I would like to acknowledge the superintendent and the administration for the changes that they've made in the format of the budget presentation. Very clear, very transparent, so I thank you for that. Thank you. A couple of questions. In your first table, is it normalized by number of students?
I have a hard time hearing this.
Okay, in this graph, this table, is it just dollars, you know, as listed? Or is it normalized per student? Okay. Okay. And I guess to your comment in regards to professional development, you don't need to stand here for that. But Anita, how is that number prepared? In other words, we don't send people out for professional development?
We're looking at this. And one of the things that's happening with these accounting codes at DESI is because, as I indicated, the current accounting structure isn't aligned with DESI codes so that the reporting out to the state is, I'll describe it as a bit wonky. And one of the things our job is to do is to bring it into alignment. So looking at this, we believe some of the problem is that there are salaries charged to, or that number reflects salaries, not just PD.
Well, yeah, and I guess what I was trying to
Which it should not, you know.
To point out is that, you know, so many days a year, we have teachers who aren't teaching, but they're in professional development in a room.
Yes.
We don't send them out, and we don't pay extra for them. It's just an allocation, I would think, based on the fact there's so many hours that were billable to the total payroll that were now considered in professional development. The second piece of it, I think, just from a generic argument point of view, is that many schools have not figured out how to do what we do here, which is to schedule the teachers within the existing payroll time to get professional development. Whereas other unions have not allowed them to do what we do, which is to set aside an afternoon a few times a year to do professional development with the teachers here in our facilities. So if you allocate those hours out of the total payroll, that may be another reason why it's so large. But other school systems just can't do that because they can't figure out how to do it within the normal working day of the 180 days a year. So, you know, but we do think there is a benefit to the fact that we do have professional development in that manner. The second thing, I guess, I would comment on and will look at, investigate the number here under maintenance and grounds. But the maintenance, at least a good portion of it, such as plowing, is done by the DPW. But I do believe we get a bill from them. And so we pay that bill even though it's within the total town expenditure of money for snowplow. And other things are also the same way, where we use other parts of the town's process, such as mowing, is also by the DPW. So it's a billable expense that the other side of the House applying the labor wants to get paid for, even though it's still within the town's budget. So obviously, we're going to look into the points that you've raised and see what, see exactly how those numbers get developed within the budget. Anybody else? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much for putting all this together. I really appreciate your insight and trying to help us, you know, find ways to improve the budget. I just, I'm curious about this professional development. If we could, you know, I'm sure you cannot give me the answer today, but if we could, maybe a better measure of understanding how we compare to other districts would be how many hours our teachers are actually doing professional development in comparison to other districts? Because it sounds like it's an accounting difference, not necessarily the difference in the hours.
I wouldn't call it that. I guess what I would call it, to the extent that there's certain requirements in the state for professional development for teachers.
Yes.
How they account for that. In other words, if you've done everything you've been required to do, then you know how many hours you spent. So if you spent all those hours and you know what the payroll costs for those number of hours are, you come up with a number that might look like this. On the other hand, if other schools, quote, "don't account for professional development in any way other than they do the best they can", and they don't isolate it in regards to a timesheet, if you will, of whether you worked here or whether you worked here or what you were doing, they may just say, okay, we do professional development, and it's all within the total teaching budget. Because it is here, you know? It's just a way to allocate how much we do. And so to the extent that DESI ever says, you've got to have so many hours of professional development, this method of accounting allows you to say how many hours it were. If you don't keep track of it at all, you can't answer the question. And in fact, you know, it's, well, okay, yeah, we do it. How many hours? Don't know. Because it's not a programmed method. So, but we'll find out what we do, I guess, and how the number got in there.
Sure. We can definitely do that. I think that one of the challenging things is, you know, where different districts put things online can vary pretty wildly, district to district. So I appreciate this because I think it does sort of spotlight places where we should just look carefully and see what we have put in there and whether it belongs there. And I think more substantively, there's an interesting question about, you know, what are we doing with professional development? How does it compare to other districts? You know, what do we invest in it, both in terms of kind of time that's outside of the salary line and inside the salary line, kind of to Steve's point? And then, you know, how does that compare to other places? I think those are interesting questions worth exploring. I feel like the program here, one of the things I will note is this district keeps a lot of its professional development in-house, which is a very cost-effective way to do the work as opposed to sending people out a lot to kind of workshops and conferences where you get kind of the double whammy of both the cost of the workshop or conference and the cost of sub-coverage internally. You know, being able to sort of provide things in-house for our teachers helps kind of reduce those costs on both fronts because we can be more efficient, both with sub-coverage and by kind of working with our own staff to, who have a lot of expertise to teach other staff, so.
So obviously, we'll do a little bit of study here.
Yes.
But I think for the purposes of the process, and in fact, we have obligations relative to this budget to begin that process by virtue of it having to be voted by the school committee, that we'll have to do that vote tonight. And before we get to town meeting, it very well could be a different number, in particular because once the budget's voted by the school committee, it then becomes reviewable, if you will, by the rest of the town, by the finance committee, the board of selectmen and town manager. So anybody else have comments on the public hearing? Sir, do you have any comments on it as well? Okay.
I'd like to interject on one item about the chart. And I agree that Mr. Savoy is right to be looking at individual categories. I just want to draw your attention to the far-right column, which is the total, on the first of the table, it's the total cost per pupil, all in. So that includes out-of-district as well as in-district costs. So if you want to get a measure of how much money we're spending per student, because the categories can be, as the superintendent was saying, a little funky sometimes, that is basically your measure of like, how much we're spending as a district compared to other districts, all in. So just, it's worth noting, you know, eight of 15 districts are spending more, not to say that we can't, you know, find areas, as Mr. Savoy is saying, to look at.
Okay. Anybody else? If that's the content, if you will, of our public hearing, I would move that we close the hearing and we exit the public hearing by virtue of rule-call vote. If that's the motion and it's seconded.
I second.
Okay. Go ahead.
Jim Sudden, yes.
Askew, yes.
Bachelor, yes.
Most call, yes.
Andoret, yes. And it being of our clock. Sort of like the mass legislature, you can make it go forever, 7:03. Very good. Let's see if we can figure out where we are.
We're right on time to do citizens' requests.
Yes. Now being time for citizens' requests, it's, actually, we're right on time, aren't we? So that's good. Anyone here for citizens' requests? Seeing none, let's move on to the rest of our agenda. So at this point, it would be school committee reports. Jim?
Sure. I will just provide a very quick update from the self-form working group, just that we did conduct a staff survey just to assess the current effectiveness of the policy that we have in place. So we are continuing to work on next steps. Just wanted to provide that update, so. Nothing else. Thank you.
Sarah?
Nothing to report tonight.
Nothing to report tonight.
Cool. I'm here, nothing to report.
You want to tell us about your Boy Scout sleepover in tents in the snow?
Maybe not tonight.
And I don't have anything tonight either, other than than to wish everybody happy holidays. Obviously, this is our last meeting before Hanukkah and Christmas. And so I wish everybody out there, you know, happy holidays and a great new year. We'll be back again on the 8th of January. So at this point, we've dealt with the trip approval, we've accepted donations. The next item would be the action of the school committee on this, on the budget request by the superintendent. Is there a motion?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommended budget for fiscal year 2026.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion beyond what we've already talked about in the budget hearing as well as the process now that will, if we have a positive vote, will occur as a result of review by the rest of the town in anticipation of a total budget for town meeting? Hearing no other items? All those in favor of the budget as offered? 500. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last item on our agenda then is approval of minutes of 12:04. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of our December 4th, 2024 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? None? All those in favor? 500, the minutes are accepted as written. With that, unless there are other items to discuss tonight, I would move that we vote to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Very good. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Savoy. Sir? Thank you.